I need whiskey yogurt.
Welcome everybody. Maybe before we start, the one, the main issue is just budget updates from where we are in conversations. Anybody have any feedback from last night?
I was gonna say, we should do a deep break.
Yeah, a little bit. But anybody, anybody hearing comments back or?
No comments.
No. That could be a good thing though, that's not all that.
I think, go ahead Louis.
I heard lots of positive comments. I talked to teachers today who were watching at home, who appreciated the complexity of answering the questions and the towns and answering the questions, but also, you know, really appreciated the collaboration and stuff that came off very clearly that we've been working together and what a difference it is from things they had experienced in the past. So that was some feedback that I got as I was in high school and at my worst this morning. And then when I woke up this morning, I had all kinds of ideas of just little things that I was thinking about. And so I kind of went through from the beginning of the meeting through to the end of the meeting that I thought could just be little enhancements because I felt like I wasn't really able to productively contribute as we were talking about it this year, having not seen it before. And so, but I thought just even having somebody at the door greeting attendees as they come in and just like shaking their hands and things like that, I know Tom and I did that a little bit. But then at the, at the table, if we had a sign-in sheet, well, more pens and pencils, of course, that's an easy one, but.
Good, because we had a high turnout.
More agendas, that would be another piece, but I thought if folks signed in and they wanted to either put their address or their email, then Tom and I could write like a nice thank you letter to them or email to them. And it'd be interesting too if we added a column, just like number of years you've been a resident in Scarborough, which is kind of a data point for us to have. And then also at the end, I thought it would have been nice if we collected some feedback from folks while they were there, or if we had their email address.
Like an exit survey.
We talked about it two meetings ago, I have on my notes, exit survey, question mark. So I think we had discussed it and then we hadn't kind of set up a follow-through with it.
So again, if people were signing in, we could either send it to them, or we could just, you know, make some time so that they did it before they left. And then, I don't know if we did this or not, because I feel like I am not really quite sure what we did, I'm so nervous. But did we introduce ourselves as the panelists? So I thought that might be nice.
No, yeah.
To just say who's sitting up here in front of you.
Who are we and what is our function?
Yeah, what is our role? And make it just personal too, it could be like something about your service, or how long you've been in the district or in this community. And then, sorry, it's kind of a long list, I was there, what do you think? Three more things. Just thanking the people who helped contribute to the setup and the development of the whole planning, because I was thinking about, you know, all the folks that went down last week just to make sure it was going to be smooth, and then the IT people, community service, and acknowledging maybe the town councillors and the school board members who were there, even if it was just, you know, your town council and residents here, or even by name, having them stand up so folks could just put faces to names, and really using it as an opportunity to connect with our community in that way. And we also had lots of staff who were there, so I thought that would have been nice to acknowledge that they were there as well. So that's my thank you bullet. And then, we had, we had thirty questions and you had four.
Forty eight with that.
And I know then there was also questions in the audience, so I thought that was really great that we focused on the questions in the audience for the folks who were there. But then, I thought it might be interesting to say if each panelist had like a question that was submitted that they thought was really important that, you know, we answered, so we kind of would have like Tom's pick, Julie's pick, you know, Jody's pick, Peter's pick. That could just be another way to kind of go ask the questions, because there's so many of them and you know you can't get to all of them. Just another idea that I have. And the last thing that I was thinking about was the question about, you know, the questions about how can we communicate better, which I know sometimes can feel frustrating because we all are working really, really hard on that piece of it. But I was just imagining if on the budget portal, we had like a table and maybe, it could look a bunch of different ways, but we could have like town, school, municipal maybe, or think about what that would look like, but maybe we would kind of differentiate the types of communication by, if you're looking for the big picture view, here's these items, you know, broken down by like town, school, collective. If you're looking for written details, you know, you could access this memo, you could access the budget book, you could access whatever. If you're looking for line item details, like these are the places you would look. And then maybe if you prefer to listen or watch, like here's the video link. I don't know if that would be helpful in navigating the, all the information that we already have there or not, but.
I felt like, we talked early on about the way that the portal was set up and we needed to change it up so we could archive the older stuff and then have the newer stuff up front, but I do think that it needs some organizing, because the way that it's set up now is sort of like a newsfeed.
Yeah.
And so, whatever the newest thing that we post is on the top, and then you have to sort of figure out which little storage bullet it is that contains the information you're looking for. So Julie and I had talked a couple of weeks ago about trying to connect with Sean and Sean Bushway and maybe come up with a different format, but of course, everything else has sort of taken us off in different directions. But I think it does bear some looking at, to organize it so that, we keep telling people, hey, go look here, this is where you can find the stuff, but if we could make it more accessible, once they get there, it would be great.
Yeah, and I was, I was just thinking about the different ways that people learn and the ways that people are comfortable, like some people would love to come to a base budget forum or to a, a meeting like this, others would be horrified by that, but they still want the information. So, kind of just thinking about like the different ways that people like to get information and organizing it, that way even if there were some weaknesses.
And then at the meeting, Kevin said, oh, there's all these people here from the town, you know, elected officials, but maybe not everybody would know who those folks are. So I was thinking, it would have been great if he'd had everybody sort of stand up, even if they're not introduced, and say, you know, you got a question, talk to one of these folks.
Well, it, it kind of goes to what he said at the end, which I thought was great. It's like, here we all are in the same room with you, if you guys have questions, go tackle somebody. And we had some neat conversations afterwards, there were a couple of people who came up and engaged in conversation with whoever happened to be standing around me, and I felt like we had some really great opportunities beyond the formal event. So if people did know, you know, you're the guy I need to talk to about X, then that could be a little bit more targeted and maybe there could be actual more planned time set aside for something informal like that. Because that goes to the whole dialogue piece.
Could it not be actually informal, but be planned and be strategic? So the budget forum, the format that we have currently ends at 8:30, and then staff goes to tables that have already been set up, and there's like, there's a depth station, there's an assessing station, there's a school, you know, activities, like, like we could decide who's going to be the expert on the different categories that we really see as being most common, and then staff can kind of go to their places to be supportive about those specific topics, and then people kind of know where to go.
Too bad, because we could have done one for the public safety building or something.
Right. Like I think that that would be a way to make it, I think that people feel uncertain about just simply approaching somebody, not everyone, there are definitely people that are very comfortable with that, but for those that do did have questions but wouldn't know where to go, maybe that would solve that, that challenge.
And the private, not private, but a one-on-one conversation serves a different purpose for, for the citizens than handing in a question, hearing it answered publicly. They're both valuable and they're both, they both serve a great purpose, but they're different.
I almost wonder if there's a challenge with that, because with a meeting starting at seven and running till 8:30, at 8:30, a lot of people, you know.
Have to walk away.
Might be like, you know what, I gotta get home, you know, it's whatever, I've gotta get up early for work, but maybe if you started at six or 6:30 and ran till 8:30, I just think that people at 8:30 were like done.
They're recorded too.
You know, I mean, there were some that did mill around, but what I'm saying is if you wanted to still have engagement at various tables, I think that a better bet might be to have it be a little bit earlier.
Or on a starter.
You know, so, so starting it earlier, meaning start the event earlier, not have the tables earlier, but then you could run that from say, eight to 8:30, people are, you know, they're two and a half, you know, I mean, a lot of people say, oh, I've only got an hour, or I've got an hour and a half, or I gotta, whatever. So, just a thought.
Yeah, and I think it was Larissa from your one-on-one conversations, or maybe it was in the survey where folks had said, when it's at night, a lot of folks don't drive at night. And so, I was really surprised at how many people were there last night, given that it was rainy and cold for two days.
Disgusting.
But maybe if we did something on a, on a Saturday morning or afternoon, I don't know if that helps, then maybe it would be more conducive to that kind of like mixing and mingling or breakout tables.
And maybe what you can do is, you know, those are all great suggestions, and maybe anybody else can just email us and we'll try to assemble it so it's there for next year.
So when you set it up next year, you'll have something to look back on.
Look back on, and we'll, I'll encapsulate these in minutes, so we, because we struggled this year saying, well, what worked last year, what didn't, this is, this really helps. But I think the, the other item, and I don't know about where we want to spend our time today, I think, you know, we really wanted to talk about the budget, where we are, what we need to do. I don't know if we want to talk about, we didn't go into a lot of detail last night about the changes that, that have been put on the table, both, both Tom and Julie have been working, whether that's helpful just to kind of quickly itemize for us.
No, no, we're prepared to. Sure. Just, I want to make a final comment on the forum. Having participated since the beginning, the one thing I noticed last night, it was larger change this year than any previous year, is there's clearly an evolution in kind of the knowledge and interest level of looking at the, the type of questions. And I'm not so sure the, the format that we're using is the best way to convey some fairly detailed information. And I, I know for, at least for me, I didn't feel as though I was able to really kind of fully answer questions, really because they're quite thoughtful and deep and require a reciprocal response.
You really need a chart or a graph for a.
So, we'll, we'll do that through the written responses, hopefully people, you know, review them, but that format, I think, if this trend continues, it's going to continue to be challenging if those questions aren't kind of very specific to the budget request, this kind of factual answers, they're more almost philosophical or larger in nature and frankly, are beyond any one of us, they're, they're conversations that this group will likely to have over the next several months.
I felt, I, I felt the same way, I thought the questions from two years ago were very sort of budget.
Nut and bolts.
And then this year, the questions had a different feel.
And that's probably going to continue, so I just throw that out there, that the format is, will be limiting in terms of how well we can respond substantively.
But Tom, if we were to give them a format to have those philosophical conversations prior to budget season, like, would that, would it be, allow the forum to become back to the kind of nuts and bolts of the past? Like if there was a fall forum, that was more about the philosophy of, like, the questions last night were more about philosophy of government and role of government? Because I wonder if there was another platform, would they be willing to split those out?
Another way you could sort of parse that in, in terms of timing would be to, if you're keeping the same structure, perhaps you could allow questions to come in earlier. Now, this year, of course, we did and they didn't come, but.
Right.
If there were questions that required a lot of research or follow-up or, you know, more structured feedback, and we knew that, say, three weeks before the forum, perhaps we could have a printed document that would have some of those charts and graphs and, and that would be.
That would be available at the time people came to.
That was my feeling last night. And I do want to compliment Jody and Peter, I thought, more than any past year, and this is no criticism on past finance chairs, but.
Yeah, sure.
Oh! Oh, is there one here?
Right. It may be semantics or.
Yeah, November 11th.
But having them stand kind of face to face.
Next to one another.
And kind of share back and forth, I think that just kind of further what we've been talking about in the time tomorrow, so, good job.
And Kevin didn't.
See, we've set the stage for them.
You did.
Not even go in there.
So here, let's start this around.
How many members of the, how many members of the public were there?
Thirty-two.
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 Oh, I was going forty-eight.
No, I was counting, if you took out staff and spouses of staff, we decided that they were not there.
As well as.
I'm sorry, we actually, your spouse is the one that caused the discussion to happen. Staff decided that the spouses were there in spouse and support roles more than citizen roles.
But she's also staff, so there was a kind of a double check.
An employee.
All I care, is anybody win, wager, or is it everybody?
Everyone did too low.
Everybody did too low.
Said fifty.
Oh. The rest of the staff got knocked out.
I'm going to throw the challenge flag on the statistical analysis, that's all. As the engineer on call pile.
Thirty-two.
And you get a yellow card.
Yeah, there's going to be a better way, because there's a lot of officials just sitting there doing nothing for two of us. And that just, that's not a very productive use of their time. I mean, absolutely nothing. So, nice to show support, but, but really, I mean, that's, for them, it was a waste of time. And so, I think you have to really save yourself. Wait a second.
And I think that goes to Tom's point, in the, in years past, we've, we've called upon Jen Lynn from the IT department to talk about one-to-one computing, or.
On some year, on rare occasions, I mean, that was the one.
That was a fresh year.
I'm guessing ninety percent of the questions are probably fielded certainly at the table, and probably eighty percent by the superintendent and manager, so, point's well taken though, that maybe.
Really, I mean, I gave away, I went home and I said, what did I, what did I take away? I said, well, I took away the fact that the town manager and the superintendent are quick on their feet and articulate and answered questions well. And I said, didn't really take away a lot other than that. And I thought they did a good job and that the Peter and Sean, the people who otherwise contributed to it, were complimentary, but didn't have a lot to do with the budget, it was more philosophical. That's kind of, I went, whoa.
Peter, would it be helpful to, I just grabbed your slide here, it's the same, it's just higher level information, I.
I think it'd be helpful, yes.
Do you want me to send that around?
Press these down, then maybe.
So what's being sent around here is the slide that Jody and Peter used last night, that is kind of the, the big picture of, the first sheet I handed around. As kind of a backdrop to this conversation, Julie and I appreciated that this process continues to move along, we've got some dates that are quickly approaching that we're not going to change, and frankly, there's a lot of work to do. So, I think a lot of time this group convened, I suggested we all quickly accepted, I guess encouraging Julie and I to put our heads together and come, come forward with a bit of proposal, and I'm very pleased that Peter and Jody were willing to at least, you know, advance that on our behalf last night. I think that was, it would have been a shame not to use that opportunity to put it out there, but we appreciate that you might be interested in looking under the hood and understanding kind of how we got to where we are. So the second sheet provides that detail, and it's a lot of the territory that will be familiar to you, I suspect. But I can say from my part, and Julie can speak for yourself, we are for these up, feeling very comfortable in terms of revenue estimates, on the expenditure side, I've been careful, they don't have all the detail yet from my staff, that we'll be able to do this without reducing levels of service. I think the next round, we're going to start to get into that, those conversations. And I'll let Julie speak to kind of the big picture of your impact, and we can talk about the details as you like.
Yes, so I think, similar to what Tom is saying, what we really tried to do was project tighter, so we looked at resigning and reducing our salary and benefit projections, and so that, we were able to find some stellar amounts there, but we also, what you see as postponing the shift of the capital improvement to operating for the tech refresh, so that, that's a part of what you see there in terms of the reductions and expenditures, or, I'm sorry, in the increases in the revenues. And then, we also looked at reducing staff professional development line district-wide to decline our, to decrease our expenditures, and revising the utility projections. So it's really, you know, the bulk of this comes from tighter projections, and then booking the MLTI revenue that we're anticipating for the reimbursement of the devices as Jen Lynn presented to the, the Town Council Finance Committee at a recent conversation we had. And of course, the, the big, I feel like gift from the universe for us is our health benefits. So we were projecting our Anthem premiums to be at 5.5%, and they came in at 1.21%. Our Delta was projected to be at 3%, and that also came in at 1.2%. So that in and of itself totals 251,000 of this 871,000 that you're seeing here at the bottom. So, I feel really comfortable where we are. I think it's important to note that tighter projections means less fund balance at the end of the year, but given the, the curtailment that has been that Tom and I both put in place as of Tuesday, with our staff curtailing all non-essential spending in this current budget year, I'm hoping that'll allow us to keep a healthy fund balance as we go, as we start planning for April 19.
Can I add one item, Julie, that you might want to speak to, is that we did take a look at the new investment proposals, and while there was a sense that pretty much everything we put on the table there with the reallocations was strategically valuable, we did take off one of those proposed, it's a .5 FTE for the athletic trainer position being increased. That's a piece of that larger full refined salary and benefits number that you see on the full municipal sheet.
Yes, thanks for adding that.
And then, just simply on the town side, excise tax, this is something we flagged at the front end of this, we continue to trend well, this, this estimate for another $200,000 will actually be exceeding that in the current year. I'm comfortable bringing that forward to you. The homestead adjustment, the homestead exemption adjustment really recognizes what current state law is, it's sixty-two and a half percent rather than sixty percent. Out of the gate, the proposed budget was at fifty percent, so borrowing a change through this legislative process, that should be good revenue as well, so I'm equally confident in bringing that to you. And then, as Julie mentioned, and this is a point of some discussion around this table, I'm sure, is our initial intent was to fund more capital using appropriations, and the question is whether this is the year to make that shift. I think, to a person, we all agree that that's where we need to initiate, the matter of when can we do it, can we shoulder it in the same year that we've got some other challenges.
So what types of things did you shift over from appropriations?
Luke does have a detailed list if you want to see it. We try to be thoughtful and careful in terms of what the zones are.
There are, there was an infield drag rake, I'm not sure what that is, some police thermal imaging cameras, some traffic monitoring cameras, heavy truck lifts for public works, there's a fairly hefty furnishings replacement and renew for the school department, individually probably not, but they're kind of like for laptops, you know, when you bulk them together, there. And some pickup trucks, pickup trucks and box trucks. So, all of those totaled together equals the 298, and then we broke it out between how much was school and how much was allocated to the town.
Now, keep in mind, we would be very careful and thoughtful about how long we financed all those items, the ones.
Probably less than five years ago.
They probably would be all of bearing less, they would never exceed the expected useful life of the item, so, though they're financed, it could be a few, three years, frankly, depending on the item, could be ten years in other cases. Not unlike, not unlike the way we've traditionally done it, frankly. Again, it's not exactly the way we want to do it, but it's just the unit to make that conversion. We have not touched food service, I think it's been a very clear objective from this group, if we'd like to preserve that, so, we respect that and have a time. So the end results, which is about 1.55 million dollars left to the taxpayers, and that produces the expected tax rate increase between 3.25 and about 4.5%.
If you take sort of that middle value, whatever, it's about a 4%.
Middle point is 3.9, but again, I'm, I'm using the range because that's the council policy.
On the reverse side, I think she'll. On the reverse side, I think she'll sign the back.
Yeah, thank you Ruth. On the, on the backside, the green is a modified tax computation page, you'll see the, how that falls out. Ruth, do you want to speak to how that's instructed because it's, the columns grab in different values, just I want to make sure that people understand what it is and why we did it this way.
So the white section is what was proposed in the manager's budget and then the first green column shows what the new values for 2018 would be with the million five adjustment. And then the net, the net appropriation for each of those same sections. And then the third column, which is kind of different, is the percentages. But I wanted to show what the two, that, those percentages are normally a comparison of 2017 to 18. So those percentages are based on what the 2017 budget is with these new numbers. But the last column shows the adjustment between the 2018 proposed and the 2018 current. So there's two different types of calculations. One is the percentage from last year to this year, or to 17 to 18, and the other one is the eighteen dollar difference from the proposed budget to the adjusted budget. So we went from a 7.84% increase on the net budget from the proposed and now we're looking at a, just a over five and a quarter percent increase from last year to, from 17 to 18. Not sure if that makes sense or not, but.
So our goal was to get you, get this conversation to a different point. I think we've done that and I think we offered up with good faith and conscience that it's doable, that it's, it really kind of embraces all the sorts of things that have been talked about, about refining our projections and really being very careful about what we need to run our operations, but stopping just short of cutting into operations.
And so if I, Tom, I know you and I talked a little bit about it yesterday, but so if we take that mid-range, which is probably historically, that's sort of where the property's value assessment shakes out, as I said, is about 3.9%. To get it to three and a half, it'd be another 275,000 adjustment, something like that.
That's the same, that's right over magnitude, we can be more precise with that if you like.
And then to get to three-ish, you know, more in the magnitude of 550,000 or something like that.
Ballpark.
So I, I don't know how, how folks are feeling, I mean, I know just personally, I've gotten a lot of emails this year, more than in the past and from different, and I'm sure everybody else will too, a lot of people looking for that, you know, that three plus score. Is everybody comfortable with where we are? Do you think we need to be someplace different? I guess would be the question for everybody around the table. There's some tough choices from, you know, I think Tom and Julie, what you guys are saying, this is, you're comfortable with this, this really doesn't impact services particularly. I mean, there are some pain points, but I think the last time we had talked anything beyond here, there's trade-offs and consequences to decisions and it's just something, you know, I think our goal is, our goal is trying to get this passed the first time through. I think that's healthy for the community and the right thing to do, so just trying to get everybody's sense of, are we good or do, do we need to have more? And just whatever people think, maybe just whoever wants stuff. I'll go first.
Put the toes in the water.
Yeah, so, I mean, I had a bunch of questions for today that we've actually pretty much addressed through the managing superintendent's report. Are we going to agree that the mid-range is what we're going to use for projections of revenue or, or assessed value? It's more for the council, I mean, than, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable either way, I'm, I'm kind of looking at, because that's a wide range of tax increase from three point, 3.25 to 4.5, or 4.6, it's a big range. So if we want to settle in on, we're going to use that midpoint. I'm comfortable with that because it's a three, that's the 3.9 number, the 3.9 projection number. You follow what I'm saying? So if we use that midpoint projection number, we're comfortable with that. I'd like to see, and Peter, your question answered that, to get to three and a half would be another 275 reduction. So I look at this a couple ways. I mean, it's easy for us to sit around the table and go, four is a good compromise, that's great, we'll pass it through the council, will it pass the, the vote?
Right.
And I'm, I'm, I'm a little probably in a regard of shot, a little pessimistic that that would be the case. I think it's going to be a pretty uphill battle if we come out at four percent. It's going to be tough to, to sell that. I think three and a half is something that I could be comfortable with, you know, and really kind of sit down and justify the fact that considering what's happened and where we're at and all the things that have happened so far, we're not increasing any investments this year, we'll pick some out of CIP, but three and a half is a reasonable expectation. It still gets us looking at your 10-year trend of tax rates, which I thought was a great chart last night, it still gets us, gets us down, you know, in a reasonable respectable area and I think that's a good chance, a better chance to pass. One thing I do want to bring up is that once, whatever we put through and whatever we pass, if it doesn't pass in June, the municipal budget's closed, we're done. So, you know, if there are reductions that need to be made, how are we going to address that? Because if we're at four, we put it out there at four and that's what we're comfortable and that's the consensus. And I'll support that if that's what the consensus is. And it fails, where do we go from there?
What's up with pressure on the schools?
It really does. It really does. So I, I think that, in my personal opinion, to get us to the place where it goes the first time and goes, well, I'd love to be, I hate to say it, but tighten those screws just a little bit more to get us to that three and a half percent in the mid-range and, and hear what the repercussions of that might be. And that might be part of the justification for not going there. But I, but I at least would like to see those numbers and hear what staff thinks would be impacted by doing that. Because I think, personally, I think that's going to be our best chance to get it on the first go-around. I could be wrong, I hope I'm wrong, but open faith and no means of a good strategy. I don't know where I've heard that before. It's from the other four budget teams, I think.
Perhaps.
Yeah. So that's Ryan.
I think that was where I articulated, I'm kind of, kind of right near you.
As far as the outlook that Chris just gave, I think is absolutely correct. I'm reserved at this time to say where I want to be because we have not reviewed a couple of budgets on the town side and particularly, and Tom's going to crunch down there, but I've said for years, community services is a, is a enterprise account, enterprise budget, it's consumer-driven, there might be revenue opportunities in that budget. People disagree with me, I've been fighting this argument for 15 years, but the fact is that, that is a cash driver, you can get more revenues out of that. So I want to kind of hear the story again this year to see where we are before that. And I apologize because this is only the first, may I be able to make maybe the second. I'm not fully subscribed to the fact that from a policy basis that we need to continue or that we need to change policy this year to include food services in the budget and to fund that through the tax base when we've been successful in the past. I agree with and compliment the goal that we've tried to set with that. This is, is not the year, I think, to do it. It will still get funded, it just gets funded out of general fund balance at the end of the year, so it's not a decrease in any services whatsoever, it's just a change of policy and I'm just not sold into keeping that in there because it's something that's substantive. I did run the numbers by the way, $275,000 reduction would actually bring us on a range of 2.76 to 4.08. The mid would be 3.45, and that's with 275. So.
He brings you about 3.5.
Yeah, so I'm so kind of open because I, the big piece, for me, the big piece is I need to see the community services budget and particularly the revenue projections.
When is that?
Monday night.
But putting that, so, so putting that aside for a second, are you more, do you think that three and a half is, is a target that we should one way or the other think about getting, as Chris suggested, or are you kind of not sure?
I'm not, so personally, I'm not sure. And the reason is because I want to understand that it depends on where you're going to come up with.
So are you thinking you can increase revenues enough?
Maybe.
That you might not have to make other, just other choices to offset that.
And the downside on the community services budget, which I recognize is that when you increase pricing, you can sometimes cause then to decrease in the demand. Although this community has never seen a decrease in demand in community services.
But there's also scholarshiping and all kinds of things that they avail to that kind of thing. So if they went up five dollars or whatever it might be for soccer, you know, am I as a parent crying because it went up five dollars? Probably not. You've got five hundred students doing it at five dollars, you know, it, I mean, it brings a little bit of something, you know?
Yeah, so the past history about this, just to give a kind of a high-level overview has been is that because community services take care of hard assets that are shared, there's always been a belief that a portion of that cost should be shared in the tax base and not necessarily paid for by consumer pricing, you know, the fees, so the field maintenance. And I, other than just generalizing that one area, that's kind of where over the last 15 years, the conversation, and by the way, 15 years ago, community services was what, probably 50% funded by tax base and so they're, they've done an extremely good job in getting closer to 100%. I think they're at about.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six, I was going to say ninety.
Yeah, the final 14% are stranded costs, they're wrapped up in this building, this municipal building and its operations fall under community services and grounds maintenance. And keep in mind, the quid pro quo is that we get used supports and field, right, change and maintenance. So there's a, that's the shared relationship, we do get something in return. We didn't have that, arguably, we had to build and, or rent our, you know, facility somewhere or run our program. So the final to 100, that final 14% is stranded in my view, will be very difficult, it's not impossible to ever close that gap, but you've heard him say that before.
And I'm smiling because I'll keep saying what I say to you. But Peter, to your point, so.
I'm right, Sean.
Do I want to see?
I'm right and you're wrong.
And you'll keep saying that.
It's all part of the humor.
Exactly, this is the humor aspect. So what I heard today was that we, there was a request for managers to go back and sharpen that pencil again. So I'd like to see what that is, as well as the council's finance committee needs to sharpen its pencil with, you can't sharpen a pen, but you can sharpen, you know, with, strictly with community services. And if there's other programs, so as an example, maybe this, this is not the year to increase the senior tax. I mean, that's, there is an opportunity to just flat fund that. I don't know if I want to do that, but, I mean, there's, there's little pieces that I kind of need to.
Let me ask just a couple of questions so I can understand what the playing field looks like. What is the, what's the differential if we did not fully fund the lunch program?
The amount that is budgeted as tax revenue is 200,000.
And what would historically be if we hadn't changed the policy to?
It's varied considerably, but it's never really been more than about 75,000 dollars.
So roughly 125,000 there?
Yeah, we had 25,000 dollars in this year's budget. But the rest has always come out of fund balance.
Okay, so that's not an insubstantial amount?
No.
And how much do we have left over in senior property tax relief, the reserve fund?
Escapes me 30,000, 40,000.
Thirty or 40,000.
Left from this year? Oh, I thought you were all that.
Whatever has been used in prior years, Ed Blaine was the one who said, let's set it aside. And we did, and last year we funded it at 75,000.
Right.
And spent 130,000.
Okay, we had a little.
So now we still have 30.
Fund balance.
30 or 40.
30 or 30, yeah, 100 or 40, I don't really remember what the exact amount was.
Ballpark though is?
I think 20 or 30 maybe.
20 or 30, so.
But we did increase the budget this year, Nixon.
So we have 130 back in, which is the traditional number. So there's, there's maybe 30,000.
I'm, I'm really, really, really uncomfortable touching senior, senior tax money at this point because I think what we're seeing, what we're seeing.
We're limited on a line item basis? What if, what if, what if we have between the reserve account and, and say 100,000 instead of 130, that comes up to 130 total and the, and the demand is 140?
Yeah.
So are we?
The standard directive is if we will meet demand, if the budget doesn't exist, we have the authority to dip into the reserve account. If sufficient reserves don't exist, then, then you've done that.
You're out of luck.
So my concern.
So you can't play that too close to the vest.
Yeah, and my, my concern is that it's a double, it's a double offset, right? That's, that to me is one of the positive things about making an argument for increasing school funding is that for those people who really have, are really truly struggling to support that, we have a mechanism in place to allow that to happen. And I think that's fair. I would be very cautious to offset that.
Well, yes, you're playing with more dangerous.
And I wasn't suggesting that we, that we do that, I just, I'm going to rely on Tom to, to look at that and then make recommendations.
I just needed to know where some of the push could be so that, so that, because my sense is similar to all three of you is to get south of 3.5 gives us a dramatically better chance of first. And, and I would be very comfortable having the two senior administrators, superintendent and the town manager, confer on the best ways to do that, to make recommendations to the school board and the town council.
Yeah, and I think, I think your suggestion was great, but I just wanted to hear from everybody that that is a reasonable target. And I think we've kind of weighed in, so I don't know.
I think for, for me, with, with Sean's comment about the nutrition program, it's, I'm sort of feeling like we're, we're double-taking in that we've asked the superintendent to really tighten up along the way so that there's going to be less fund balance at the end, whereas that's normally where we would cover.
Right.
The deficit.
You're absolutely right.
That's what I'm saying, but cover that deficit.
We all know 2019 is not going to be a great year.
We're going to say.
And that's a fund balance matter. And you're correct that we're taking away from fund balance money.
But my concern is that if it doesn't pass, no matter what we've got in fund balance, we've got to take it somewhere from, now we've got to take it from the operational budget on the school side somewhere.
And a bird in the hand is what convinces me, I'd rather get passed with a first this time.
But there's no guarantee.
And face the music that we, because we haven't taken into account the chance that the legislature will override a veto because they put money into the school budget that actually improves on these numbers for us.
But maybe as a process though, I think all we're trying to do is, is that the right bogey that we should direct, you know, Tom and Julie to kind of work toward?
I'd say we're within shouting distance of the commitment we've all, that town councillors made to each other and to the public, that we're trying to do around 3% or less. And getting a penny below 3.5 to me would be close enough for government or.
I don't know.
Yeah, right, so we're, that's, yeah.
And personally, I would prefer you just giving us a number and letting us figure out how we calculate that because.
I appreciate that.
It really changes the way I'm thinking if we're not funding food service. So I would be, I would be cutting in other areas than what I've proposed right here.
I think one of the issues that we face on the school side is that we have switched up the schedule a little bit, so that we have our second reading tonight.
Yeah.
We're supposed to procedurally hand off the school budget, sort of a done deal to the municipality so that you guys can incorporate it into your proceedings going forward. That's not to say that we haven't traditionally gone back and tweaked those numbers and changed them at the end of the day.
Or refused them entirely.
Or refused them entirely? That must have been you, Chris. But I guess my, my point is that we are going to be voting on something tonight and that isn't to say that it's still not a work in progress. I guess my point is procedurally, we're moving forward as a school budget document or a bottom-line number, but that doesn't mean that we're closing the door on it. We have to get through the rest of your process, we have to get through referendum, we have to revisit everything, so.
And to that point, my understanding is that tonight we will be voting on this, these most recent numbers.
That's the way that we were looking at it until the conversation, until this group were able to meet.
I want everyone to appreciate Julie's comments just a moment ago, that if food service is part of the equation, I don't think she's comfortable, from what I heard, putting forward these cuts. Her proposal would be different. And so if you, if we have any hope, an expectation, the school board is going to endorse this tonight and incorporate it as part of second reading, I think we need to provide that assurance now that food service is not part of the equation. If not, I don't see how they can comfortably.
I understand that I don't necessarily concur with that. And the reason I don't concur with that is because the second reading, ultimately, the finance committee and the council is going to decide what that number is. We can still have these discussions and reduce your budget by an agreed-to amount after your second reading. And you've already got your plan in place now of how you're going to adjust to that. So I appreciate the need to, to get to a point, but, you know, we got to look at what are, what's our, what's our number one goal here? Our number one goal is to get the budget passed on the first round and take the best chance to do that. Because I, I, you know, and again, like I said before, if the consensus is as is right now, is good to go, I'll support that, but I don't think we're going to be, I don't think our chances of success in, in, in June are going to be as good as they could be at 3.5. At 3.5, I think we can all get out there, shout from the rooftops, it's a tough year, we've all done, we've all done what we can do and really get out there and advocate behind it. I'm not saying we won't do that at the current budget, but it's a harder sell.
We understand our first chance is our best chance. And we're not, I'm not opposed to 3.5 being a reasonable place to get to. I'm just saying if the food service ends up being a pretty important part.
Yeah, I agree.
And the sort of collaboration that has been shown, I think more so this year than ever, I think it gets very delicate the way you just described it.
But isn't, isn't, if we have to go from 3.9 to 3.49.
9.9.
9.9.
Yeah, Walmart.
I mean, I would see food service as being an integral part of doing that. Yeah, it's true. It's using up fund balance and makes 19, the 2019 budget that was just a vote, but it's bird in the hand, we do it now, and, and that's sort of what goes further into what Julie came up with for cuts to get us to 3.9. And I'm looking just on the school side. That then it goes a long ways towards the part that would be the schools' part of going from 3.9 to 3.9.
I think what Julie's saying, and she could say it herself, since she's sitting right across from me here, is that the, some of the projections that we've made in tightening up the salary and benefit lines, the utilities lines and so forth, those are some of the things that allow us to generate the fund balance, which allows us to pay food service at the end of the year. So the tighter that we get on our guesstimates of what it's going to cost us to run things, the less fund balance we have at the end of the year, and the more important it is to actually have a plan for food service. So I think to her point, if food service is not going to be funded directly, then we have to be more planful about how we budget to create surplus, quite frankly.
Well, and I think a point I would also add to that is 200,000 doesn't totally cover all of food service costs when you look at it historically over time. So there already is going to be a need for some flexibility. And I just, I worry about us getting to a place where we're so limited on flex, on our flexible spending, if you will, in some of these areas. Because even when we're looking at salary and benefits, as I said last night, you know, changes in staff, changes in student needs, those are things we can't predict. And it takes one, you know, student in our district and even out of district placement that would throw us way out of whack if we're like so tight down to the penny. And honestly, on a budget of our size, to have a $300,000, $400,000 fund balance, that's pretty tight budgeting already. And that's what Kate has been doing, you know, for years. And so also knowing too that we're really draining our fund balance this year by reaching, by, you know, going in and bringing that 2.1 over into offset our revenue losses. So I just, there's, you know, there's, there's benefits to, to doing it multiple different ways. I think that it would, I would feel more comfortable making different types of decisions if we're relying that heavily on fund balance to pay that bill that we know is going to be there at the end of the year. Because there's all these things we don't know are going to happen.
So I guess from my, again, from my perspective, I don't think to, everybody here realizes the, we're not, I don't think we're asking these things as kind of a, an off the cuff kind of, hey, just run this and see what you think. I think what we're trying to do is get to a point where we've got to set a target, we've got to set a goal, that's our responsibility, that's what our role is. How we get there is a number of different ways on how we can get to that. But if that's going to be our goal, the best thing in my mind is to state that goal, turn it back over to the professionals in town, and say, please help us understand how you would get to this point.
And what are the trade-offs?
And what are the trade-offs, exactly. The flip side of that is, is, and I don't think this will happen, but the flip side of that is, we put this budget together, a proposal comes in, and we've seen it happen in the past. A proposal will come in in chambers at the second reading, and everybody goes, you know, I want to reduce the school budget 100, $800,000. I don't think it's going to happen, but the, the, the council still has the, the opportunity to act on that even after the budget is agreed to. So I, I guess, you know, we're, I think we are all working towards the same goal, and I think, I don't think any, I certainly don't scrutinize or question the, the veracity and the validity to which you guys put your heads together to come up with this stuff. I know it's not the easiest thing in the world. And I know how she, she projects, and I would trust her numbers eight days a week and twice on Sunday. The real question is, is how do we bridge this gap that we've got? What's the best, fairest, easiest way, not easy, there is no easy way. What's the best, fairest way for us to bridge this gap if that's what our goal is? And, you know, I mean, we're getting down to the point where, we have a second reading tonight in the school board. Okay, I know that we're up against a deadline, we've got some dates coming, we've got to make decisions in finance within the next month, for sure. So we're, we're at the point now where it's like, okay, we've, we've started to, we haven't nibbled around the edges. We're chewing into the, starting to chew into the center. We're almost at the center now, and we've got to decide, okay, are we going to take that extra bite, or are we going to take a step back and see what's left? So, I mean, at this stage, I guess it's, I understand the rationale behind all the decisions that were made. I understand the process of how, what was left on the cutting floor already, what hasn't been approached, and why the things are still on the table. I think they're all valid, they're all to a T, each one of them can be justified and correctly supported and advocated for. But if our goal again is this, we still got to get to this goal, or as close to it as we can.
So I think I'm comfortable, I mean, I think I agree with you, it's a great suggestion. Let's ask, ask to identify what other items can be considered to get us to the 3.49. Is that your, is that your number?
3.49.
9.9. And then this group will have to get back together next week, which is another meeting, which we have a schedule issue, so we'll have to figure that out. And then have that conversation about trade-offs and is it worth it? But I, but I think I concur too, that, that we have a better shot at 3.5 than we do at 4. And maybe when we see what the items are, it'll, we'll make other decisions, but.
I just want to be clear that 3.49 or 3.5, that is using the midpoint evaluation?
Yes.
Yeah. And that's our best guess. I mean, but we'll still show the range because it can come in.
Right. I heard that was the upper end of the range.
Unless we've got, I mean, I'm, I just chose that one, I think that's historically what we tend to work with, or we did last year, at least historically, the one year we did it. If we want to disagree with it, I'm fine with that too, as long as we're all on the same page, that's fine.
And I think, so keep in mind on May 11th, there's a joint town council school board workshop on the budget. So that's an opportunity for us to delve into any conversation that supports this discussion today, if, if we need to, about where that 275 is coming from.
Are you looking to make time adjustments for?
Well, I.
I feel like May 11th is too late at that point.
Town council members.
Two weeks.
Like a week before your final vote.
But I think the goal, personally, I mean, I think the goal from the limit is to say, here's where we're at, we're done. We're now representing it as, we're all behind this, this is the work we've done, let's get out there and move this forward and push it. I, I, that's my, I think that's how we did it last year, is we, all the head looking was done by, by that point, we were all like, okay, here's our budget now, now we're going to present it out, we're all going to hit the streets and start advocating for this thing. It was, I don't think it was more of an, it wasn't a negotiation at that point.
But if we're at, if we're saying that's going to be our next, you know what?
I'm sorry.
That's the joint town council school budget workshop. So that's everybody.
Right.
On May 10th. And then the 11th, this group has a joint town council, school board financing. I'm just looking at what I've got on the lovely Easter.
Again, I mean, I think to me, if, I, I have the utmost confidence that staff is going to come up with a, they're going to pull a wrap it out of their hat or other areas and, and come up with something that is what we're asking of them. Then the question becomes, is that what we want, and are we comfortable with that? So I don't.
Right, but I mean, I don't know that we want to have that discussion on the 10th as the school council and school board.
Why not?
Because then we're still negotiating, then you just said.
So the third is the town council public hearing on budget, the third. Say it again, I didn't hear. The third, next Wednesday.
It's our public hearing.
Is their public hearing on the budget.
Yes.
So then between then and the 10th is just that week.
Which keep in mind, on the 3rd, the majority of this town has no idea that we've already reduced the budget 1.4 million, ah, $1.5 million, let alone that we're looking at another 275. So they're looking at it as whatever.
What are you cutting from here?
People are publishing in whatever media that they have. So that's a different dynamic. I think on the 10th, when we have a joint workshop of the council and the school board, it's about getting us on the same page because we're the ones who then after that are going to go out and have to explain why we support this budget. Hopefully unanimously, but if not, at least what is the opinion of both boards?
Could I suggest a slight deviation? Next week, finance committee is scheduled for Monday night and Thursday night. Monday night, it'll be marathon, but your schedule is complete, all your department reviews. And Thursday was reserved, it was open, it was kind of final deliberations. You could choose to invite the school and have a joint meeting next Thursday night.
We have school board, but what time do you have your normal?
We start at 6:00.
So instead of having our finance, keep in mind, we have a school board finance committee meeting from 6 to 7, and before that business meeting, we could do, we could join.
Yeah, I don't need to hijack the finance committee's process, but it might be convenient to check that in.
We're already canceled too because of you guys, why not just come up?
You're welcome.
Can we just tell them, share what the schedule works for?
Yeah, we'll let you know.
So that sounds reasonable, so you're.
I suspect that's, joining you on the 4th instead.
Yeah. Well, if you think about it, that, that second meeting was to talk about policy.
Typically, we do a third quarter review.
If you guys come in with 270, with recommendations for an additional 275, there really is no need to have a conversation about policy because we've already really instituted policy changes through your own actions. So I.
Assuming you like what we're proposing.
Yes, right. You know, the one thing I wanted to say about this is that we, I hope that the recommendations that we're making are sustainable in the sense that next year, this becomes the baseline on which we start, and we should employ whatever was undertaken to get us to this number by staff in particular, but even the council and school board should automatically happen next year. So that way we don't have to renegotiate because we need to, you know, pan through this problem for the next, you know, probably at least a year, if not two. I'm hoping after one more year that this will subside and we've adjusted to it, but, you know, the conservativeness needs to be expressed in the future budget, at least one more budget, so.
So are we agreeable, one hour would be enough to just join them for 6 o'clock? Or are we saying that?
Just bring duct tape to put over Chris's mouth, and we'll be there in a half an hour.
And hopefully.
Respectful dialogue.
We're saying 6 to 7. 6 to 7.
Okay, I just want to make sure so that I get it down, that I know where we're all going, or where we all know where we're going.
So between now and then, does that give the two of you enough time?
Enough time.
I know where they're going directly up here.
Overriding.
Yes. For me, no.
So not to be a process geek, but that's me.
I love the conversation.
Those aren't mine, that's someone's. Although I am a color person. Again, back to tonight, the school board's meeting, the school board, I think, is what we're saying is that the school board tonight will vote on the recommendations that have been made so far, and that we'll have the opportunity on the 4th for this group to get together, talk about further reductions and what that might look like to get to the 3.5%. And then we might be able to even make an amendment proposal at the school board, that that school board meeting that night as well.
Well, you also have, don't you have the ultimate, we have to, it's procedural, but you have to accept what the council does anyway, right? So do you have to have that approved?
Yeah, that's on the 18th of May though.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying.
But we could make adjustments at that point as well.
Right.
I mean, there's always, there's always a reaction to council action by the school board because the council is the one who's finalizing the process.
And you have to accept, well, not accept, you have acknowledged that that's.
Acknowledge and make adjustments that are needed. So, cool. So with Julie done tonight, I guess we're going to proceed with the pieces that we have before us right now, and that we've already sort of agreed that that's what we want to bring to the school board, and then we'll make additional adjustments next week.
Claire.
All right. And of course, be with you. Thank you, everybody.
One first question, are you ready to adjourn here?
Well, no.
I just have one for the first, we talked last meeting about a second ballot question.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to get your resume relaxing, it's the second one.
So Tom, not to jump in, but what, what I was hearing from the attorney this afternoon was they didn't need to go on the ballot.
It does not need to go on the ballot.
Doesn't need to go on the ballot.
That seems absurd to me.
Well, and that's why I wanted to talk with you in person.
I guess I misunderstood that.
And call it out in a, in a public meeting, but we did have a conference with Drummond Wilson this afternoon about what really the statute means in terms of this extra, what we're talking about is if there's any additional subsidy that comes our way, the opportunity to allocate that in advance and to plan for it in advance. Bill Stockmeyer, who is the sort of legal board process guy at Drummond Wilson, said that their interpretation of the statute is that the vote that is specified, it talks about a public vote and the public has authorized, and it's part of community, is actually acknowledged to be the town council. So as long as the town council says this is what we're doing in their order, in their budget order, then it's considered to be voted upon by the public because we are the representatives of the public.
So it would need to be added into the budget order.
It would need to be added into the budget order, and in so doing, it could be reported to the voters, but it wouldn't be going into their hands to be voted upon.
Let me ask you though, if this is our intention, would it not be helpful to tell the voter who's voting on the school budget that these are our intentions?
It would be very helpful for them to know that that was our plan, and the question is the vehicle by which we do so. It doesn't, according to what Bill said a few hours ago, it doesn't have to be a vote that they say yes or no to, but it does have to be presented to them as something that is a choice that's been made by the council. So in the notification of the budget where we say, you know, these are the amounts and the categories that we are proposing to spend them in, do you approve? At the bottom of that, there would be an, oh, by the way, the town council has authorized that should we receive any additional subsidy after the point of the passage of this budget? This is how we would disclose of those funds.
But is there any downside to having it on the ballot?
They say no.
Right. It goes to fund balance.
Of course there is.
Yeah, I, I think that, that what, the, the main point that Bill was making, and correct me if I'm wrong, because Julie was listening in on this conversation, the main point that he was making was that most of the statutes were written with RSUs in mind or, you know, school unions or groups where there is a school board that's in authority over multiple organizations, multiple communities. And so there's an understanding, I guess, in the legal community that a municipal charter based town council organization with a school as an apartment of that organization is not really held to quite that same process. So where in the statute it says the voters have approved, or at an annual budget meeting it's been approved, since we don't have that format for the development of our budget, they just substitute the town council has authorized, the town council has voted on, the town council has approved, and move forward in that way. They also said that the, you know, town council sets the referendum in the municipality, that the school board doesn't have to do that. So I think it's a question of Drummond Wilson and working with MMA, trying to tease out the meaning that the legislature intended in the statute, and, and it's not really written for us.
Yeah, but to some degree, I think that we talked about this previously. Yeah, but to some degree, I think that we talked about this previously. We all thought this is as much as sort of a.
PR move.
PR move to say, you know, we hear you, it's on there. I mean, to me, there's, there's, I don't see a lot of downside to doing this. I mean, if they vote no, then all goes to fund balance, which we say that's not necessarily a bad thing either. But I'd rather, I mean, yeah, we can do it, but what you just, look how long it took you to, to describe that to us, the average.
Who actually know what you're talking about.
Yeah, the average person is going to, they're not going to see that. So I think there's, there's lots of good reasons to do this. I don't know how.
But I think also, the opposite, seeing it that way, the opposite holds true for me in that we're just putting a one line question here and hoping that the general public understands what this is even talking about.
That's defined by statute. That first question is in statute, we can't change that.
No, no, but I'm saying, we're talking about the second question. The second question throws the question and the unjargon on it.
I tried to make it as simple to understand as possible.
But I think it will come beyond there, it just won't be a question. It will say.
It's a statement.
Call it fiscal note.
We have agreed to.
The difference is, and maybe is, the difference is this appears on the same ballot.
Right.
What you're talking about, what appear on.
The little.
Information posted.
She then posted outside the door.
Probably, there's at least two or three pages associated, a lot of numbers, people aren't going to see it on that page. So I'm just observing, there may be value of having it right here for people.
So I, I, oh, sorry. You were going before. We don't need a broad.
Just to, just to Peter's point, and I think it's more than just a PR move, if you will, I think that we are generally saying to our taxpayers that we understand the pressures that you're under. And so if in the event that we do receive additional subsidy, we want you to see that benefit this year and next year. We want to split that benefit over two years. This is how I was understanding our intent. And so I think if the town council makes that decision, we're saying like this aligns to our values and this is why we're making this decision. Where if you put it out to vote, then you're saying to the taxpayer, you decide when, when this, when this is available. As opposed to us saying, you know, that's, you're the elected officials, the town council, that's part of your decision making power, if you will.
So I didn't, I did not support putting this on there. I thought it was pretty credible, that one. One of the reasons I didn't is because if, if somebody's not looking at the process and watching what we're doing and they see this, I think maybe in their mind, they're thinking, hey, I'm going to get a tax rebate. And if it doesn't come, now we're in a situation where we've said, hey, I was supposed to get some relief and I never got it. I voted for this relief and I didn't get it. So now we have to sit here and explain, well, you didn't get it because the state didn't do this. It becomes a defensive position now and if they vote on this thing, yeah, I'm going to get a tax rebate instead of the might be able to, sort of kind of would be able to. That's my concern is that by putting it out there like this and it passes, people automatically assume I'm going to get some kind of tax relief. And if it doesn't come, now we're accountable for that.
Well, you still have to make the decision of what happens. And one of the other things that Bill recommended was that, you know, at the end of this sentence where we have a question mark, you would just put a comma and you would make a note that if, if received prior to, you know.
July 1 or whatever.
Well.
The tax commitment.
Yeah, the date of the tax commitment.
Is there anything, is there any structure preventing us from, rather than having it as a yes or no question, just putting a statement?
Right.
The town council has agreed right onto the ballot.
I'm a typical D, but I don't believe there's any allowance for other language.
You can't really put anything on the ballot.
The ballot question, all of these more conservative, that's for purpose, I think.
Yeah. I think the word.
But at a rolling place, you could post all sorts of other stuff, but if people read it and understand it, it's not a matter.
It's kind of small punish, but in asking if we have some, if we put a little sign in the voting booth, in each voting booth, as just one piece of paper, eye, eye level? Can you do that legally? Tony does put the notice.
He may not put in the, in the voting booth. I think they should not. I can't do them and say, well, it's definitely putting Goldie Locke.
So I am completely confused where we are in this conversation. So I, I believe that this could be relabeled and just simply noted as a fiscal note in that it would simply, the statement be reshaped so it's not a question that tells the town council approved that this, and then that's it. I don't agree with having the vote. I think it's going to confuse people because they don't understand, they're not going to understand what relief means, they're not going to understand what general fund is, they're not going to understand it. I just, let me rephrase that.